Hiri, hiri. Silence is commanded by this honorable commission. All those having business draw near.
Thank you, and you may be seated.
Thank you, and you may be seated at this time. You've heard the command that silence is commanded. I ask you at this point to check your cell phones, to check all your electronic devices, that none of them disturb this proceedings because I've got a bunch of sheriff deputies here today, and I don't want them to go back to the bread and breakfast with their pockets full of your phone. Alright, so please ma'am, please sir, check your phones. Alright, so that, so that we're all on, on the same page and, and going through. I would ask you to be seated at this time as we get ready for our inspiration and then during the time of our invocation, I'm going to ask you to restay in as we go into prayer, and then following that, Commissioner Buford will lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag, and then we will proceed on. This morning, we have with us one of our own who works here at Chatham County and been working for Chatham County for the last 24 years in our employment benefit administrator in the human resources department. And I don't mind saying that she's one of my students, alright. I taught her when she was in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And I don't care if you, if you label me in my age. I'm, I'm glad to be my age. I'm, I'm proud of my age, alright. But, but Elder Johnson is coming before us now as a native of Savannah, Georgia, who graduated from Eli Beach after I left out of Bartlett. She's earned a bachelor's degree in business administration and a master's degree in business administration from Savannah State College, then now university, alright. And she's also attended the, and graduated from the University of Phoenix where she got her masters. And so she is a devoted wife, right, and an extremely, extremely, extremely good mother of two wonderful children. So I present to some and introduce the other, Elder Johnson, who's going to come to us and give us words of inspiration and then our invocation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for that great introduction. You dated me a little bit, sir, but that's okay.
I dated myself first.
Okay, alright, I'll take that.
Yeah.
Thank you again for the opportunity once again to come before the commission and bring a small, short word that will hopefully help somebody feel better about themselves, lift somebody's spirits today. That's what, to me, it's all about because in today's world, we need that lifting of our spirits. So that's what we're going to do this morning. So we've all heard the phrase, "If it ain't one thing, it's another." I know we've all heard that. That's a phrase that I've heard a lot in my life, or I've said it myself, that if it ain't one thing, it's another. But lately, there's a new phrase that the younger people are using, and it's "life be lifing." So this morning, we're going to talk about "life be lifing." "Life be lifing" is an expression that acknowledges the ongoing unpredictable nature of life. It talks about the joys, the challenges, the ups, the downs, "life be lifing." So we are to take on this journey, how? How do we take on this journey when life is lifing? The way I usually do things is kind of demonstrative. I do things where you can see what I'm talking about. So this morning, we're going to handle that by talking about the letters in the word "life." How do we handle when life is lifing? By first, laughing. Life can be hard. As we survey our own circumstances, those of our family, the situations in the world, it's easy to become worried, embittered, despairing, but know that laughter is good for you. If you don't laugh at least once a day, start doing that. It makes you feel a little bit better. It makes you think about things a little bit differently. In our darkest moments, God has the power to turn things around and bring light into our lives. And so we can celebrate that by laughing and having joy. Next, the "I," by interceding. If you intercede for someone else, sometimes you'll feel better about yourself. You won't think about your own problems when you realize someone has worse problems than you do. So when you go before the Lord on behalf of someone else, it makes you feel better about your situation. First Timothy 2, 1 and 2 says, "I urge then first of all, that petitions, prayers, intercession, and thanksgiving be made for all people, for kings and all those in authority, that we may live peaceful and quiet lives in all godliness and holiness." So as we stand here and sit here today, although your life may be lifing, who may need your intercession this morning? Next, "F," by pressing forward and forgetting what's behind us. So what? It didn't turn out like you thought it would. So what? Things look a little bit different than you thought they would at this moment in your life. Philippians 3 and 13 says, "Brothers and sisters, I do not consider that I have made it my own yet, but one thing I do, forgetting what lies behind and reaching forward to what lies ahead." A call to focus on the present and the future, not the past. It encourages embracing forward motion, not backward motion, and making the most of every moment of our lives. Lastly, "E," by encouraging ourselves. Samuel 30 and 6 tells us that David was very, very distressed. He was pressed, he was confined, and yet noticed what he did next. He didn't complain, he didn't murmur, he didn't even worry. He encouraged himself in the Lord. So in the face of pressure, in the face of the things that may be going on in your life, in the midst of life lifing, we need to learn to encourage ourselves. We don't need to be bitter or despondent. We need to know that God has the situation completely under control. It's not in our own ability, so let God handle it. So when life starts lifing, what are we going to do? First, we're going to laugh a little bit. We're going to intercede. We're going to press forward and forget about the past and those things that we have no control over. And last but not least, we're going to encourage ourselves. So everybody in this room this morning, let's walk in the abundant "L-I-F-E" that we've been promised, even though life may be lifing. Let us pray.
May we stand?
Dear Father, first we thank you for everyone gathered here today. We come before you today grateful for the gift of life, even when it feels heavy, unpredictable, and full of challenges. Lord, you know the seasons when life is lifing. When the storms seem stronger, the burdens heavier, and the answers unclear. Yet we also know that you're our refuge and our strength, a very present help in times of trouble. Now, Lord, fill this meeting with your presence. In this meeting today where matters of business are being conducted, guide all hearts and minds. Impart your wisdom upon this meeting so that every discussion may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Thank you for your many blessings upon us. May we leave here encouraged, renewed, and ready to walk in the purpose that you've placed before us. It's in Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Permission to Buford?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Let me thank Elder Johnson for being here today and for giving us those words of inspiration and, and those words of encouragement as we go about doing the duties and taking on the responsibility we have here at the county commission. Thank you again for your words. May we have a roll call?
Chester A. Ellis, Chairman.
Present.
Bobby Lockett, District 3, Vice Chairman.
Present.
Melinda Scott Hodge, District 2, Chairman Pro Tem.
Present.
Anthony Wayne Noah, District 1.
Present.
Patrick K. Farrell, District 4.
Here.
Tanya Milton, District 5.
Present.
Aaron Whitley, District 6.
Here.
Dean Kicklider, District 7. Marsha Buford, District 8.
Present.
Alright, let me have a motion from one of the commissioners to excuse Commissioner Kicklider on the, for medical reasons, please.
Motion to excuse Commissioner Kicklider.
Second.
Properly motion and second that we excuse Commissioner Kicklider for medical purposes. Are you ready for the question? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Whitley, I'm looking right at you. How do you vote? He votes yes. Alright, thank you. Let me recognize, um, I was trying to get a scope of the room. Do I have any constitutional officers here? I don't see any. Alright, let me all recognize now Major Mackey from the Sheriff Department and also our Assistant Chief Talbert, who's here. Okay. Or the fire chief? Where's he? Oh, they sitting there, okay. They sitting down. Normally, I'd look for them standing up, but I know they weren't there. Alright, we have the fire chief here, alright? Okay. Alright, let it be ready now to move on. The first order of business is a proclamation, and this is a proclamation recognized in August 2025 as Child Support Awareness Month. We ask the director to come forward at this time.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let me read this impartial, alright, but there is, we have it on, you have the proclamation on the, on this, okay. "The County of Chatham, Georgia, proclamation. Whereas Child Support Awareness Month holds significant importance in recognizing the crucial role child support plays in the lives of children and serve as a reminder that by supporting children in need, we can help them overcome obstacles and create a brighter future. And whereas this marks the 50th year since the implementation of the National Child Support Program in the United States, however, it was in 1995 when former President Bill Clinton designated the month of August as National Child Support Awareness Month to place emphasis on the importance of child support in society. Now therefore, I, Chester Ellis, Chairman, on behalf of the Chatham County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim August 2025 as Child Support Awareness Month, and Chatham County encourages the citizens to do their part to ensure each child has the necessary resources available to thrive and live a comfortable life. And witness whereof, I hereby set my hands and call the seal of Chatham County, Georgia to be affixed this 8th day of August 2025. The floor is yours."
Thank you, Chairman Ellis and members of the Board of Commissioners. On behalf of the dedicated staff of the Chatham County Child Support Services Office, I am honored to accept this proclamation recognizing August as Child Support Awareness Month. This month serves as an important reminder of the vital role child support plays in strengthening families and ensuring that children have the financial and emotional support they need to thrive. Our office works every day to promote responsible parenthood, help parents meet their obligations, and improve outcomes for children in our community. I hope you will share the information for our Fourth Annual Child Support Resource Fair on Saturday, August 30th, 2025, from an 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Mother Matilda Beasley Park, 500 East Broad Street. We thank the Board of Commissioners for your continued support and recognition of this important work. Together, we can continue to uplift families and build a stronger future for the children of Chatham County. And I have some flyers for all of you if you would like to share those. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if you will, make sure Ms. Gill gets that date and time, alright?
Yes.
So that I can look to put it on, see if I can get it in my schedule, alright, on my calendar.
Thank you.
And I want you to turn around and face the clock.
If I can get, um...
Bring yeah.
My entire office up with me, please?
You brought the whole office?
I sure did.
Y'all come right on up. See, because you all are our hidden heroes. We don't get to see you all.
Thank you.
And recognize now, if you're short, don't get in the back. Nobody's able to see the short people in the back. Short people need to be in the front. Alright, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Proclamation declaring August 2025 as Emergency Management Awareness Month. The director is here and, um, we're ready to move along. Y'all have a great day. Y'all kind of balance it out. Some of y'all come on this side. There you go. Chelsea, you don't move too far from Dennis now. Yeah, there you go. Alright. "The County of Chatham, Georgia, proclamation. Whereas emergencies and disasters can occur unexpectedly, posing significant threats to live property and the environment. And whereas local emergency management across all sectors, our community leaders, state government, and the federal emergency management, FEMA, dedicated countless hours to developing, preparing, responding, recovery, and migration program to protect the lives and property of all persons living in the United States and the U.S. territories. And whereas Chatham County Emergency Management Agencies and other emergency managers across our region, the state of Georgia and the United States are charged with establishing and maintaining the capacity necessary to effectively direct, coordinate, and support emergency and disaster response and recovery efforts and serve their community by coordinating efforts during countless emergencies and disasters each year, demonstrating commitment, compassion, and professionalism in safeguarding the public. Now therefore, I, Chester Ellis, Chairman, on behalf of the Chatham County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim August 2025 as Emergency Management Awareness Month in Chatham County. With the support of the International Association of Emergency Management and the National Emergency Management Association, I urge all citizens to express their sincere appreciation for emergency managers who work diligently to prepare, protect, and serve our cities, counties, regions, state, and organizations against all hazards and risks. In addition, I urge all businesses and governments to review and enhance preparations efforts by understanding the risks within our community and know what to do to migrate damages and increase resiliency throughout Chatham County. And witness whereof, I have hereby set my hands and call the seal of Chatham County, Georgia to affix this 8th day of August 2028. The floor is yours, sir."
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the commission for recognizing August as Emergency Management Month in Chatham County. This, this is an inauguration for us. This is the first in Chatham County and also the first in the country. Across the country, the International Association of Emergency Managers is asking all counties to recognize August as Emergency Management Awareness Month. So with that groundbreaking and inaugural proclamation, I've also asked my staff to be here as part of that as well. So in the field of emergency management, it is so broad and so vast. We're mostly known during our, our period of time during hurricane season, but we do so much more than that. Our main mission is to plan and prepare the citizens of Chatham County and the governments within Chatham County, within the Chatham County borders. So we develop countywide emergency operations plans which covers all hazards, not just hurricane threats. It includes technological hazards, other natural disasters, human caused hazards. We coordinate community preparedness programs, trainings, and exercises throughout our, our area. We identify and analyze hazards that could impact the community. We coordinate resources and personnel when it does cause time for us to, to interact with in a response effort. We develop the Emergency Operations Plan for the county. When the chairman issues a local state of emergency, that Emergency Operations Plan essentially becomes the bible for the response effort, not only for Chatham County, but for all the municipalities within Chatham County. We support short-term and long-term recovery efforts such as sheltering, debris removal, restoring utilities. We coordinate long-term recovery efforts including disaster assistance programs and rebuild- rebuilding. We also look at mitigation efforts that we could implement across the county and its jurisdictions to minimize the effects of those natural or technological hazards. We also conduct public education campaigns about preparedness. Again, it's all about preparing our citizens and our municipalities for those threats that affect Chatham County. All of this is accomplished through a small but mighty team standing behind me. And if you allow me just about four or five more minutes, I'd like to recognize each of them real quick. Randall Matthews.
Raise your hand, Randall.
He is a former Marine and an SSU graduate. Go Tigers. He is internationally certified as an emergency manager. He's also Georgia certified as an emergency manager. He's completed the FEMA Advanced Emergency Management Professional Training. He's an advisory board member for the Southeast and Caribbean Disaster Resilience Partnership. He serves on the local government seat. He's also the chairperson for our Area 5 Emergency Management Association, and he also represents the state of Georgia on the International Emergency Management Association panel. Chelsea Sawyer.
Chelsea.
She is also a Georgia certified emergency manager. She has, uh, completed the FEMA Advanced Emergency Management Professional Course. She's been recently recognized as top 40 under 40, uh, in emergency management. She's a member of the Executive Board of the Coastal Empire Disaster Recovery Committee, and she's the first county employee to offer a TEDx talk, uh, in Chatham County. She did that in, uh, late spring, early summer in this year. She's also a recipient of the 2024 Community Hero Award. She is a graduate of Leadership Savannah, class of 2019. She also serves on the Metro Savannah Rotary as a board member, and she is a member of the inaugural One Chatham Inclusion Academy, which was led by Human Resources. Seth Sawyer. Seth, raise your hand. He is a Georgia certified emergency manager. He's, uh, completed the FEMA Advanced Emergency Management Professional Course. He's a graduate of the National Emergency Management Academy. He's a certified professional continuity practitioner. He's a certified as a demonstrated master logistician. He's an amateur radio technician, a certified public safety instructor. He is a TEACs public safety supervisor. He serves on the Board of the American Red Cross, and he is an assistant emergency coordinator for the Chatham Amateur Radio Emergency Services Group. Florence Colbreath.
Florence, where are you?
She's back there in the back. She, uh, she manages our budgets. We have three different budgets, and she also manages 17 other, uh, funding opportunities that SEMA has been fortunate to be involved in for a total allocation of a little over 114 million dollars, all managed by Florence. So she's, she's also a, uh, certified as a CGIS network operator and a terminal agency coordinator for GCIC information. David Smith. There's David. David right there. He is, uh, our radio systems manager. He is a retired Army First Sergeant. He's a communications security manager, Security Plus Certification, and an amateur radio technician. Willie Farrell. Willie is our business systems analyst. Uh, he is certified in CompTIA Security Plus AWS Cloud Practitioner Certification, and he also has several certifications in different Javari applications. Matt Pimentel. Matt is a FEMA ICS Communications Unit Leader for the state of Georgia. He's an amateur radio extra license. He has amateur radio extra license. He's also a volunteer examiner for amateur radio. He's also the Assistant District Emergency Coordinator for 14 counties in Southeast Georgia. Stephen Meyer. Many of you may know Stephen Meyer from, from his, uh, former employment with Animal Services. Thank you, Dr. Harper, for allowing us to have him. He is a Skywarn Practitioner, of course, certifies as an animal control officer, which comes in handy, uh, when we're doing planning. He's a former educator. He is a master improv practitioner, and he is an avid Lego enthusiast. So, uh, also interestingly enough, in 2020 Connect Savannah, uh, they voted him as the best Chatham County employee. Yeah. Tiffany Arant. Tiffany, where are you? Right there. Tiffany, uh, she has been certified in Critical Infrastructure Protection. She's also a GIS certified, uh, operator, and she is a graduate of All Hazards Management Program. Kenneth Elberg. He is an amateur radio extra license amateur radio volunteer examiner. He is the Assistant County Emergency Coordinator for two counties in Southeast Georgia, and he has a variety of different IT certifications. And then we have three members of Mark, of our team who is not available to be with us here today. Nicole Niedinger, she is on a much needed vacation. She's out in, uh, in Vegas, hopefully spending a lot of money and making a lot of money. Uh, we've got Michael Saturnino. He is, uh, formerly with the Coast Guard. He's with the reserves in the Coast Guard, and he's on deployment, uh, with the Coast Guard right now. He returns to us in October. And we just hired a new employee. Her name is Lydia Tucker from North Carolina. She'll be joining us at the end of September. So Elder Johnson referenced earlier being inspired. Um, I am regularly inspired by this team. Uh, I'm humbled to be there, to be, uh, I'm humbled, I'm humbled by their dedication. I'm encouraged by their commitment. I'm honored to be working with them, uh, each and every day. So, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, thank you again for recognizing August as Emergency Management Awareness Month.
And, and just words cannot thank you all enough. Um, and I say to all the commissioners, if you have not seen them in action, all right, that's, that's something to behold, and I know that, um, there's not much opportunity for you to see them in action because they're like little busy bees going all over the place, getting all the, and watching all the different screens and getting all the different information from the National Weather Service and all the rest that we do. But they do a yeoman's job, and, and then let me, um, thank you Director Jones for, number one, making sure that everybody was certified and everyone get as much of the education and things that we need to help us and to, uh, be on top. And, and I'll say to you today on, in our budget items, um, when we were doing some transfers of monies, all right? That transfer of money is a part of it, is for your new home, that we hope to be up and running real soon, so that we can have the facilities that you need to carry out the operation that keeps us safe. And on behalf of all of Chatham County, let me thank you for keeping us safe throughout, uh, all of our disasters that we've had so far and those yet to come. All right, let me start on the far end, and I'm gonna come down to every commissioner who want to speak now. Uh, if you want to speak, then speak up, all right?
I just want to echo the thanks. Um, I've seen you in action from when I was fire chief to today, and whenever everyone else is losing their mind, not knowing what to do, you're calm, cool, collected, unlike myself many times, and you get the job done, whether it be manmade or natural disasters. So thank you from all of the citizens of Chatham County.
Thank you, sir.
All right, moving right along. Moving right along. Let me just thank you all for the good job you all are doing, and that is a well-qualified staff. Thank you for keeping us safe.
Thank you, sir.
Moving right along.
Uh, I, I, two voices, thank you.
I've, I've seen, I've seen you in action, and you certainly get the job done. We're very happy and very proud to have you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All of you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Moving right along.
I just want to say thank you for the work you do, and congratulations. Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Wiley, you want to say anything?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just want to say to Dennis and his team, uh, congratulations. Thank you for your service, and I know, um, it is that time of year when we think about you most, but I want you to know that we think about you all the time, and you're always in our thoughts. So thank you for your service. Thank you for what you do for our community, and we pray for, uh, peace and comfort for you and your family as you guys take head-on ultimately some of the challenges that our community faces as a whole. You guys face it head-on at the front. So thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
And lastly, let me just say how enjoyable and how proud I am that, uh, even though, uh, as the chairman of the Command Policy Group, the decision falls at the desk that I sit in, but, uh, we couldn't make those wide decisions without the information and things that you all gather, excuse me, and get to us so that we could all come on one accord to make sure that we keep Chatham County safe, all right?
Thank you.
If you all will, Dennis, take the proclamation and go to the front of the class. Everybody turn and face the wall over there, all right? Photographer is going to take it from here.
Step forward. Two tall guys on either side. That's good. No, 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 you're good. Come right up. Switch places because I'm liking the red on either side. There we go. That's great, that's great, that's great. Skim it just a little bit backwards, please, sir. Like a board. Skim it, go ahead. Y'all are so good. Come in just a little bit. Thank you. There we go.
Again, many thanks to you all for the job you do. All right, thank you so much. We don't have a chairman's item nor a commissioner item, the table items. We go to items for individual actions. To request bold approval of the following budget amendment and transfers, excuse me, fiscal year 2025, and a general fund transfer of $53,283 from Greenbrier to increase transfer out to the CIP Fund 2, and the Special Service District Fund appropriate fund balance of $14,500,000 to increase transfer out into the fire fund. 3, in the Capital Improvement Program Fund. A, increase state revenue $2,283,903 to capital, uh, to increase the L M I G Emergency Engineering Project. B, increase transfers in from the general fund, $53,282 to increase the Greenbrier Revenue Renovation Project. 4, in the, in the fiscal, in the fire fund, increase transfers in from the Special Service District Fund, $14,500,000, and decrease fire protection fee revenue. 5, in the Health Insurance Fund, transfer $50,000 from contingency to transfer out to Flex Fund. 6, in the Flex Fund, increase transfers in from Health Insurance Fund, $50,000 fiscal year 2026. In the Criminal Justice Coordination Council, CJCC Juvenile Justice Incentive Grant. 2, in the Sales Tax Seven Fund, amend project budget as listed below. 3, in the Capital Improvement, uh, Program Fund. A, transfer $126,492 from Public Works Vehicles to transfer out to Solid Waste Fund. B, transfer $28,532, $35 from the Rodney Hall Bathroom Renovation Project to Recreation Apartment Funding Project. C, transfer $120,357 from CIP Continuity to the MD 500 Helicopter Project. 4, in the Solid Waste Fund, appropriate funds balance $117,132 to increase the vehicle account. B, increase transfers in from CIP Fund, $126,492 to increase the vehicle account. Is there a motion? Properly motion is second at the request to the Board of Transferring of the funds be granted. Are you ready for the question? Hearing none, all in fay, please cast your vote. Commissioner Wiley, how do you vote? All right, thank you. At this time, we are going to have the Chatham County Animal Control Update by Dr. Harper.
Take one and pass this down. Come on, same, sorry, I'm working. Need Catherine to come in. Oh, there we go. Now I'll go to my slideshow. Guys should see it. Should be able to just do a slideshow from this. Sorry, I'm just trying to. We can do it. We can do it like that, this works. Okay. First of all, thank you guys for having me here today to give you an update on Chatham County Animal Services. I appreciate you letting me come, kind of let you know what we're doing over there. Um, as we move through this, what we'll do is I'll just kind of show, we want to start with some stats. Um, and these are the stats from April to August of this year. Um, over that time, we took in 443 dogs total. Those are owner surrender, officer impound, and strays, and 162 cats. With cats, typically we take in just strays only, and they're always sick or injured, and that's kind of indicative there, where we have almost 144 cats, whether they're sick, injured, and things, and those are things that we have to provide medical care for or do other things, you know, possibly euthanize them if we need to. Um, if you look to the right, you'll look at the live outcomes. We had 100 adoptions, 135 returned to owner, and 164 rescue transfers. You see that most of the animals that come into Chatham County Animal Services into the shelter are transferred out through rescues. Um, we do do a lot of adoptions, and, you know, the returned owners are just microchipped dogs, or they're impounded for rabies quarantines, those kind of things, but the majority of the stuff that we do with, you know, animals leaving the shelter are through rescues. So we depend on our rescue community pretty, pretty heavily. Same thing with cats. Um, if you look, we have 80, you know, of the 162 cats that came in, almost half of those went out to a rescue transfer, and most of those are kittens. Um, what I'll, and I want to show you, this is when we talk about our rescue partners. These are typically, I put out mostly the local rescue agencies that we work. We typically will transfer animals to them directly, but we also do transports where some of these rescues, you know, One Love, which is O L L A R down there, they actually will do transport up to, you know, some of the northern states to pull, pull cats and dogs out. Um, you know, some of the big, some of our bigger supporters, Renegade Paul's down there, they took, you know, transferred about 66 dogs out during those months. They are helping with a lot of other things. They take in some of the strays that go around the neighborhood, in neighborhoods, and they also will do a lot of owner surrenders that we can't take. Um, same thing with, um, GUR and with Coastal Pet Rescue, they help us, and One Love as well. Red Clay down there, you'll see they take cats. Um, they're kind of our big cats, where they have a lot of, or they take in a lot of the sick kittens that we take in, or just the healthy kittens, because we have a lot of just regular kittens that come in. Any questions about our intake numbers, anything like that?
Any question from any commissioner? Or Commissioner Noah?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, like Renegade Paul's 66, um, it seems like they're our biggest ally in this.
They are.
And is there some type of working agreement that we have with all of these? Are we just, it's all verbal?
It's mostly verbal. Typically what happens is, you know, we have relations with these agencies. We take in dogs, or cats for that matter. After they go through their stray hole, then we can, they'll come in and pick them up. Renegade is one of the only, is the only rescue, well, there's Coastal Pet Rescue also has their own facility, but Renegade has a building, and they also are very foster-based, meaning you go to them, you say you want to foster a dog, they pull dogs from around us, they may pull dogs from us, they may pull dogs from somewhere else, or have dogs that they have that have been surrendered to them, and they put those dogs into foster homes. So their foster, most, the other rescues are all foster-based. So they depend on people in the community to do it, depending on how big their foster program is, they typically will, that determines how many they can pull. Renegade is one of the rescues, Renegade and One Love are typically those rescues that we allow medical pulls from. I mean, if they come in before their stray hole, they're sick or injured, they will, we sign them out to them as a medical foster, they will typically, whether it's, they provide the medical care, they get donations and things to provide some of the medical care that we don't have the funds for. So we don't, it's not something that we have a formal agreement with some of these, but it's been a long-term relationship with Renegade. You know, Jen Taylor is the director of them, and we've been, she's been around for a while.
And you just stated, so the financial side of that, they assume all financial responsibility for those dogs they take?
When they pull the dogs, they assume all the responsibility. We typically will provide emergency care at first through us, but when they take up, they use donations and stuff, they'd fundraise for those fund to get, to treat the dogs that they need to.
And no funding from?
Not, no, none from us directly. You know, before, one of the things before we did, you know, when I came on board, we used to actually charge rescues, if like an adoption, when they would pull from us. We realized that wasn't feasible because they were, you know, they were taking on these animals to take care of these animals, and they were pulling, you know, 66 in three months. I mean, we're talking about hundreds over the years. And so they do, they do, or they are allowed to pull animals for free from us.
Well, yeah, it seems like it should be opposite. We might should be paying our rescues. Um, out of the 73 and a half percent of the save rate on dogs... of the seventy-three and a half percent of the save rate on dogs, one hundred and forty-four of them, is that true that one hundred and forty-four are being euthanized, or what?
Oh, the, yeah, save, live release rate is the ones that leave alive, and the ones that don't are either euthanized, or they die during care, or if something happens, and they're sick, they're sick when they come in.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other question?
Yes, so.
All right.
On the adoption rate, is that a good percentage? I think you got, what, seventy-three point five?
Yep, typically, you know, the, the gold standard for most shelters is ninety percent, and if you combine those numbers with the other big brick and mortar shelter, the Humane Society, we're close to, you know, eighty-nine. So those are pretty good numbers. Unfortunately, it really depends on what we see. I mean, that's, across the country, they said that ninety percent is what they consider no kill, but even though there are still euthanases that happen. So we're kind of approaching that, but seventy-three is way better than we used to be.
Thank you. Any other? All right.
Now, let's talk about the other side of our, what we do is our animal control officers and their citations. This is just, I'm, I'm just gonna, let me look at calls for service first. This is just a list of from the first, first half almost of 2025. These are the amount of calls that our officers have run. We have, at one point, we had five officers, now we have six running calls. So these are the total, because we ran three thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine calls year-to-date. That's a lot. And if you look at, like, we've got them kind of divided up. I want to kind of highlight some of the big ones, the ones we look at the most. If you look, welfare checks are the, one of the, is the highest. That's typically when someone calls in, hey, my neighbor has a dog that I don't think they're taking care of, or I see, I hear noises in the backyard, those kind of things. Those, you know, that's a high percentage, it's seven hundred and eighty. The most, the highest percentage we see is dog at large. That's when someone calls and says, hey, I see dogs roaming around. I put in this other part of this, when we look at unfounded dog at large. What that means is, we got a call for a dog at large, an officer ran the call, and when they got, by the time they got there, the dogs were not there. That happens sixty-five percent of the time. So when we talk about priority calls, and when you look at them, we typically run, you know, the danger calls are the first. If we have bite cases, if we have aggressive dog at large, if we have a police department assist, or sick and injured, those are typically our primary, like our more priority, higher priority calls, where dog at large typically, if you call for a dog at large, and you aren't sure where the dog is, or where the dog belongs, then that may, that's something that's put on a lower priority, because the reality of the situation is, when we get there, it's more than likely gone. So we kind of depend on citizens when they call, to actually say, hey, these dogs are at large, I think they live at this house, if they can tell us what house, and we can direct to that house, and actually determine where the dogs belong there, and then we can kind of deal with a dog at large call that way, versus just hoping to find a dog that's, you know, was at large, because it was going home, and by the time we get there, it was already home. The other big thing that we do a lot with, you know, the injured and sick, you know, there's another, you know, three hundred animals that we actually go out, and like, the officers will go out and pick them up, bring them to the shelter for me to assess, or take them to, you know, overnight emergency care to actually have them assessed there. Some of those dogs aren't injured enough that, you know, we can impound them. Some of them ended up, you know, it's one of those hit by car that are too severely injured that we have to deal with. So that typically is the majority of those, but we do have some that come in for, you know, sick or injured cats that come in that may just have an upper respiratory infection that we can send out to different, you know, different places. Any other questions? My biggest thing is, I wanted to just kind of get it out there that, you know, dog at large calls, while we respond to them, we've responded to almost a thousand, or, you know, eight hundred and twenty-four, but a lot of them are just, we go out patrol, they're not there, so we kind of depend on the public to know, hey, where were those? Can you help us to find out what's going on?
Question.
So how do you handle the leash law? How does the leash law tie to these animals?
Correct. So what happens is, if we know where the owner, where the dog belongs, if we go out and pick up a dog that's at large, then sometimes we can cite that owner. And it would depend on the court, because we found the dog at large, they owned the dog, they didn't have it on a leash, so we can write citations for that. If a dog is just found that, you know, if a citizen has a dog, like, a neighborhood has somebody that in their house, they continuously let these dogs just run loose in the afternoons. They run loose, they come back home, we never actually see them at large, then we depend on a citizen that witnessed that to go to court. We can cite them, but then we need witnesses to back that up, because if an officer doesn't see it, we have to depend on a, a citizen to see it, to go to court, testify that, yes, that the dog's out from four to six every day. This needs, you know, we need to do something to address that. Did I answer your question?
So it is, yeah. So, so it is, you can police it.
Yeah, we police it, and it's something that we, you know, we can cite, and it kind of depends on the court whether or not they're gonna cite them for dog at large. Most, a lot of times, they're just, they're kind of passed over, they'll, you know, they'll, we've had a couple of cease and desist orders, you know, sent out because of people just chronically letting their dogs at large, but occasionally, those don't, you know, dog at large isn't a, it's a hard thing to do sometimes.
I see a lot of them stray.
Yeah, and a lot, I think a lot of times, those dogs aren't necessarily, you know, there's the dogs that people just let out, and come back home, and then, you know, if they're not a problem, they're not a problem until they are a problem, and that's when people, you know, that's typically what happens.
Unless they're like the ones that was in my neighborhood. The former renters who were there, the, the dogs belonged to them, but when they moved, they left the dogs.
They left the dogs.
So the dogs were roaming the neighborhood during, during any time, day and night, but they would always go back to the house.
Right.
But the new renters don't like the dog, don't own the dog, but the dog keeps showing up, sleeping in the yard and stuff.
Right.
So I know for a fact, when they call, and you all got to the house, that the dogs were three blocks away, and so now it becomes a chase game.
Yeah, and we, we have traps for that, too, so we can set up traps that, you know, but, and that also requires someone to watch the trap, because we don't, we put them out, we monitor them, but they, somebody needs to be monitoring them twenty-four hours a day to make sure that these dogs don't get in the traps, and a lot of times, you put, set a trap, and people come by and open them and let them out, whatever else. So it's, it's become, we, we require a lot of citizen involvement, a lot of times, with the dog at large, just because it's, it's a bigger issue than just going out, picking up a dog, and citing them, and making them pay a fine, because sometimes fines don't deter that either.
Me and my neighbors appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Because, of course, for some reason, people have a habit of throwing the dogs off of I-16, and they come in Carver Village. I mean, and they roaming all over the place, don't belong to nobody, but they bothering everybody. All right, so one day, we're gonna catch up with whoever's dumping those dogs, but we have, we've had several instances where folks have just stopped on I-16 and put the dog, and the dog come down the hill. You don't know, it'll go back up the hill, he come down the hill. So that means the neighbors got a problem. And we thank you for y'all, because every time, we tell folks to call.
Yeah.
Every time they call, you all show up. Now, you might have to chase them three or four blocks away, but you got, but at least y'all show up.
Yep. I hear stories all the time from the officers go out, you know, like, oh, we're chasing these dogs, you know. They come back tired, and I'm like, I try to talk to them, they want to wear black shirts. I'm like, guys, you want to get like, you want to get a cooler shirt, you know, we get yellow, or whatever, and they're like, they don't get really dirty. I'm like, yeah, I get you, okay. So anyway, any other questions about the call specifically?
All right.
Then I want to just back up to look at the citations. These are our citations. We have it from the first quarter, which is January, February, March, and then the rest of, the rest of the months. You know, we operate with, typically with, like, with most things, giving, you know, trying to educate first. So these, when we push the citations, those citations go, you know, that citation is usually after, hey, I've educated you, this is what you need to do, this is, you know, we have places where we can go for aid, if you need to have assistance, but if you just don't, aren't willing to take, you aren't willing to take help, or you just refuse, then citations happen. And so that's kind of just a list. If you look, like, the biggest one, the one on the head for rabies tags, like, if you're not, if you don't have a valid rabies tag, like, if someone, if your dog's vaccinated, cat's vaccinated, you're required by the ordinance to have a, a registration tag. We go out, we don't, that's not something that we, like, look, that's not a primary reason for us to be there, but if we go out and do a welfare check, and they don't have proof, they can be cited for rabies tags. They go to court typically. If they're cited, typically, they go to court, and they're not fined for that, because by the time they, the month or so before they go to court, they're already getting a rabies vaccine, so in order to get the tag, so they don't have to, the judge dismisses those charges. The biggest one is neglect and abuse. We have a county ordinance that specifies things that goes along with the state. State typically is more severe, so with state charges, we require a police officers to come out and cite, but with neglect and abuse, that we say we can actually cite them, they, you know, they'll go out, it's typically poor housekeeping. It's typically like letting dogs live in the backyard, not with no food, no water, no shelter. You know, outdoor keeping kind of goes along with that, but it's the first step. Outdoor keeping, and then the next step is like, hey, your dog's too skinny, you're not feeding your dog enough, the dog doesn't have enough veterinary, hasn't had proper veterinary care, those things. That's where that next level goes up. Those are just misdemeanor, and typically, we, you know, that goes to recorder's court. If we have something severe, and we've had a couple of cases where we've had pretty severe cases of neglect and abuse, that we depend on the police departments. Usually, the municipalities will go out and cite, and they'll go to court, they'll go to, that typically goes up, you know, that's, the charges are misdemeanors versus, those go to misdemeanor felony, felony charges, depending. We haven't had any recent felonies, I don't think, but we're looking into some of those things now. We've got a couple of cases that were just, they're just, the dogs aren't being kept up very well. And so we've gone out, we've seized them, we've held them for, till court, they've fixed things, and a lot of times, it is, they, either they don't know to fix the things, or they don't have the money to fix the things. And we work with, and this is another thing where we work with Renegade, because Renegade does a lot of, a lot of good things in the, in, over in their area, and just across Savannah, with helping people build fences, providing veterinary care, providing food, whatever people need to try to keep those dogs in their home without, you know, neglecting them. Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
All right, one more thing. I wanted to just go through, I've got, now we're talking about hurricanes. I want to just kind of give you an idea, after SEMA was here, it's probably a little, refresh your course on what we actually do for hurricanes, because we actually do, we have a bunch, ugh, sorry, now my, there we go. That's just an overview of kind of what we do as far as staff-wise. We are currently, we have eight animal care assistant positions. We are currently at five. We're, we're looking to hire three more, so if you guys know anybody that wants to be an animal care assistant, send them to us. In our emergencies, we typically will impound animals, we can set up temporary shelters like we did last year with the flooding, and we actually manage, the biggest thing that we do is evacuate animals that hurt during hurricanes. We have two parts. One is, we have our officers, myself, and some of the support staff go to the EAA, where we check in animals when people are evacuating. We assess the animals that come in, we transport them, we work with Atlanta Humane to actually transport them out of the area, whether it's to our shelter where we have, in Henry County, which is what we have, we have an agreement with Henry County to set up a temp shelter up there, or we, Atlanta Humane sometimes will take those animals themselves. As far as the shelter staff goes, we have animals at the shelter. When we look, when we start looking at possible evacuation, we start looking at where the animals that we have, that are actually part county property after their stray hole, or before their stray hole, what we can do with those animals. And then I'll go through kind of the op-cons. So first, we start looking, you know, when we start getting up time, I start looking, we talk with SEMA, I'm on all those calls all the time, I'm talking to Dennis, I'm talking to everybody over there, just kind of figure out what's going on with these hurricanes, what we're gonna do. I meet with staff every day, we start looking at the animals, that we try to, you know, putting out social media posts, those kind of things to move animals out of the shelter. When we get to four, when we start looking, it's a little bit closer, we start looking at calls, trying to limit our intake. We don't want to, you know, we want to still protect the public, but we don't want to, we're not taking in as many strays, we're trying to look at, you know, only taking in the animals that we really have to, that are causing problems. We start looking at how many animals we're gonna have to move. We look, reach out to different partners, whether it's, you know, we have the MOU with Henry County, but we also have relationships with Statesboro, we have relationships with other places that we can kind of call them, hey, we need to move fifteen animals to your facility, is that okay? Yeah, then we'll transfer them out, kind of like what we do with the rescues here. We start making sure everybody's vaccinated, make sure everybody's sick, and then we confirm animal placement and make sure what we're gonna do. Seventy-two hours out is when we start moving animals. So we have three trailers, we can move animals in our trailers. We have, we've actually used, Statesboro actually has a big horse trailer that when they come, if they're gonna take animals, the last time we evacuated, they actually pulled in and took our animals with them. We start, we start getting more out, out there with PIO and with SEMA, kind of putting out notices about what we're gonna be doing with the animals, and what we need help with, because that's, the community steps up huge when this happens. You know, we were just talking with the Humane Society, because they have the same issue. They have animals there in their care that they have to move, and they do temporary fosters with their animals, and they don't typically move a lot of their animals. Some of ours, we can't, because they're in that stray hole period, where we're responsible for them, then we can't move those out to foster, we have to take those with them. The other ones that we have to take with us, are if we have rabies quarantine dogs, we, those have to stay with us, because we can't, they have to stay under their quarantine for the ten days. Two, that's when we start moving everybody. We have staff that will go with these animals. We typically have five or six staff members that go, to go actually stay with animals, take care of them. The one thing that we sometimes will have to do is if we have animals that are sick, you know, that's sick, and we can't, we can't move them anywhere, we may have to euthanize those animals. That hasn't happened. In the three evacuations that we've done, it's been, people have taken, people have stepped up to help the, help the shelter move all these animals. And then we shut down the facility. Afterwards, this is just kind of an idea of what we do at, at Henry County. It's actually a horse arena that we're gonna use, that will all be, that'll be kept outside in kennels typically, where we actually take care of them. They can provide veterinary services, because I typically will stay around in town, but they have a veterinarian that comes on, that's on board, and they can, we may end up, we actually talked with the Atlanta Humane, and they may be able to provide staff to help us take care of these animals, because we've, the two previous times that I've been involved with evacuation, we've had actual shelters that we were in, similar to ours. This is gonna be a little bit different, so they're actually, they can bring supplies down to us to kind of help us. Then the last part of it is, when we bring them back, in, in the past, when we bring the animals back, we transport them all back in our trucks, they come to our shelter. When the, the animals from evacuees, we typically will reach out to the evacuees and have them either come get their animals, or we take them to them. It just depends on what their situation is, don't know what they're coming back to, so, and don't know when they're coming back, so we typically hold, we held a dog, last evacuation, we held a dog for two weeks before the owners could get back. And we ended up, they called us, and we took the dog back to them. So that's.
Is there a fee for that?
No, we don't charge a fee for that. And that's kind of our evacuation procedures. Anybody have any, I just wanted, I really wanted to get that out there, so that you guys can know what we do for those.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mm-hmm.
Moving right along. We go to the action calendar, no one express any interest in taking anything off, so may I have a motion to accept the action calendar in its entirety?
Motion to accept.
So, Mr. Chairman.
The second, properly motion is second. Yeah, I got it. She's, she got it. All right. Do we accept the action calendar in its entirety? Are you ready for the question? Please cast your votes. Commissioner?
Yes.
All right, your votes, yes. All right. Moving right along. First readers, we're just reading this into the record, Amendment to Chapter sixteen, Article one, entitled Business, General Provisions Ordinance, Business License Ordinance. Two, to delete and replace Chapter ten, Article three, entitled Private Detective, Private Security Business and Alarm System Business of the Chatham County Code. As first readers, we will take them up at our next reading. Going to our second readers, and in these second readers, on all three, we will have different intervals, because if you, we do have a public comment part that goes with each one of them, and if you wish to speak on number one, please come up to the manager and sign on the pad, all right, before I read it into, look at article, second reader amendment to Chapter twenty-four, Article one. If you'd like to speak, please come up and sign up. All right. Amendment to Chapter twenty-four, Article one, Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance, F D P O, to establish consistency in format with other county ordinances, and to provide clarity to the residents and developers on development requirements in the various special flood hazard areas, S F H A, located in unincorporated Chatham in the Chatham County Codebook.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna ask County Engineer Ms. Cooler to come to the podium, and she's gonna give you a brief update on the changes that we're proposing.
Okay.
Thank you. Excuse me just a moment. What is today? I don't know, this one. This one. Okay. Okay, good morning.
Morning.
So, it looks like a major overhaul of the ordinance, but what staff did was attempt to align this ordinance with other county ordinances to make it more easily readable and enforceable. So where it looks like we've done a major overhaul, we haven't actually included more, it doesn't actually include more beef. So what we attempted to do was, or what staff attempted to do, I don't know if you all are familiar with Dr. Angela Bliss, but she's our flood plain administrator, and she did the heavy lifting on this, so I do want to recognize that. But what we attempted to do was realign all, the whole ordinance, so we included a summary of where the sections moved to in the new ordinance. But what you will see that actually did change as far as substance goes, is we added a few definitions, because we have run into some issues enforcement of the current ordinance and definition wise, so we added some things that are coming up as frequently asked questions and issues. And then the other thing that we had to do, or we were asked to do, was to, so on our, I think it's been about two iterations back, we removed the requirement that critical facilities could not be located in a special flood hazard area. We were asked to put that back in, because the idea is if you're gonna protect the community, how are you able to protect the community if your own facilities are being washed away or damaged or flooded? So we put that back in, that, that they could not be located in the special flood hazard area.
What do you consider a special flood hazard?
It's as mapped on the maps provided by FEMA. The special flood hazard area are those AE, AO, coastal A zones, the ones that get regulated, not the X. Anything that is not X is a special flood hazard area.
So that's like all the islands?
For the most part, yes. So if it's not shown as X on the map, then it gets regulated by, by the ordinance, and those are called special flood hazard areas.
All right.
My concern would be, and correct me, what did you state as far as, did you say shall not be located in?
Yes.
So how do you determine where to place, I consider a fire department or a police station, especially fire, because they're mandated to be in a certain area to receive their ISO ratings? So how do you not have them located three miles from a, you follow where I'm going?
Yes, agreed, which is why we took it out originally, because it gets complicated. But you can identify properties that are in the X that are in that area, or you can fill as needed to bring it up out of the special flood hazard area.
But if the roads are flooded, you can be on a hill and a building, just can't get anywhere.
And that's the, that's the other thing. If the roads are flooded, then you can't get to it anyway, you have to plan ahead and get your equipment out ahead of the storm. Which is why it was, which is why it's in the state model ordinance, that they not be, they not be located there, or that the access to them can't be included in special flood hazard area.
Well, isn't it half of our county?
And which is, which is why we took it out previously.
So why are we putting it back in?
That's my concern.
And again, it gets back to that, trying to protect the, our resources, as we're regulating the community to a standard, and, and by not requiring that, by not having these standards for critical facilities, then we're saying, well, you, we're, we have these regulations to protect you, but we're not gonna apply them to ourselves and protect our own resources.
So in, in the majority, that's being driven by what FEMA's giving us?
Right, it's in the model ordinance, and they asked us to put it back in. The other thing that we considered is if we don't want to put it back in fully, that it be located there, at least that we change the language to say that if needed to be located in a special flood hazard area, that it be flood proofed, that it be a flood proofed facility. Others who don't use drywall, or those types of things.
Is that in the document?
Currently, it says they can't be located, but, but a, I don't want to say compromised, because it's not really a compromise, but an alternative to that is that it be located, but be flood proofed.
I guess where I'm going, and again, I got this last minute, or for me, it was last minute, and I have not looked at every single item, but my concern is that we're maybe need to slow down just a little and get those right, because if we're putting it that you can't, and I know we're looking at building fire stations and stuff like that, I mean, it just seems like we'd catch it on the front end rather than the back end.
Yeah, I would prefer that we harden the structure, because 99.9% of the time, it's not gonna be flooded, that's not really the issue. The issue is, it might be a police department, it might be a fire department, whatever, that needs to be located in a place that serves the community effectively. I don't want to have a fire department in Pooler to serve Skidaway Island.
Right, but you also.
Because they're higher.
Sorry. Yes, but also, is it effective to have a facility that can't serve the community if it's flooded?
It, it only floods for a very short period of time. In my lifetime, I've never seen anything stay flooded for more than 24 hours before the tide goes out and the storm passes and the water goes back down. So on the islands, you just don't have much choice, there's, there's really, there's no, it's not much high ground to deal with and you, a huge population. So if you locate certain facilities too far away, I would prefer they be hardened, so that we know that they're gonna flood occasionally, and we don't want the drywall in there and that sort of thing. That would be my, my preference that.
But isn't, isn't that what FEMA telling us, that if we, if we build it to the standards that they are providing, where is, I don't want to say flood proof, but is storm proof, they still can, because they're looking at the fact that those fire trucks and things that we're talking about, they're higher up. So unless we get a five-foot flood or 10-foot flood that they can't go through, those are, those are the vehicles we use anyway, so if we build in that area to what FEMA's telling us we can build for, then we are covered. And what I mean by covered is, if you put something where FEMA says shouldn't go, all right, and it get destroyed any kind of way, you're not gonna get reimbursed for it, right?
Correct.
And so, but now, can't we, can't we put them in areas, and as I understand, what we're doing here is, is that by meeting the FEMA guidelines, we are protecting ourselves, we're protecting our equipment, we're protecting our people, right? Is that, did I have that right?
That's correct. Yes, that's, that's the intent of the ordinance.
But are we not saying, I'm, I'm hearing two different things. You're saying we can build in the flood zone, but our new ordinance absolutely says we shall not. Am I right?
Correct, so several.
So you can't have it both ways.
Right, so the ordinance, the flood damage prevention ordinance included this language. And I think 2014, it was removed from our language. So now, we've been asked if we can put it back in. I will say that we get no CRS benefit from putting it in there. The benefit comes to protecting our infrastructure. Again, we could write it in a way that would allow for flood proofing, which only protects the building and, and not the equipment.
Equipment.
Which, so the equipment would have to be moved out if we know a flood's coming.
Which, as far as I'm concerned, and what my knowledge is, is that it is moved out. There, they reposition with every change in the course of the storm, they move back a certain level to keep it out of that flooded area. So my concern would be that we are putting something that we shall not, when we're here, and maybe we should allow certain places to be, and then we move the equipment.
Well, right, and just to be clear, let me get to this page, so you can see this definition of critical facility, it's not just, it's not just fire stations or police stations, it's not even just county facilities. We're talking, and there it is, number 14 on.
Well, systems and.
It includes wells.
Public or private facility?
Yes, and so, it includes facilities that use or distribute highly volatile, inflammable, toxic materials, and the idea there is you don't want any of that to be released during a flood. Hospital nursing homes, you don't want them underwater during a flood. Emergency operation centers, and then plants, utility systems. So it's not just our county facilities, it's those things that could cause serious harm if flooded, and injuries.
Can I ask you a question? Is Elba Island a critical facility?
Yes, it would be.
Okay, and we're saying with the new ordinance, that, what I'm hearing is that we, they would never maybe be able to expand, because they couldn't get a permit for any upgrades to that area.
Right, and what they, the way they handled this in the past, is they have a huge berm around it, which protects it from the flood, which pulls it out of the, the special flood hazard area.
Nursing home, no nursing homes on Tobby Island. I mean.
Well, we don't regulate Tobby.
If it were destroyed by fire, under the new, well, Tobby maybe not, but Wilmington Island.
Unless it's in the.
Right.
X zone.
Which most of it's not.
But isn't that outside of what we talking about? Because if there, you're talking about a nursing home, there's gotta be some state regulations and some federal regulation that they have to go through that don't fit in ours, right?
I, I'm not familiar with all those regulations, I'm just saying that per the definition of critical facility.
Right.
Which is why it got pulled out in, in the first place.
Right, and, and they're saying you don't put those in there?
Right, that it's not safe to have it in the special flood hazard area.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that, based on the comments that some of the commissioners have, we can go back and look at it, and I would suggest we push this to the next meeting, but I would ask that any of the commissioners, particularly commissioners represent the islands, if you have additional concerns, get that to us, and we can, we can look at it and see how we tweak the ordinance.
Has this ordinance been shared with the local home builders association, since they're most likely to be the most, you know, frontline?
Yes. We coordinated with them early on, sent it to them for comment, they came back with some minor, more grammatical type comments than anything, and we addressed those, and those are included in this proposed draft.
Don't, don't we have copies of what they sent back?
Yes.
All right, let me, let me ask us to do this. Let's table this one, all right? Can we do that? Can I go in and table just this one?
You can do that.
All right, let's table this one, and those comments and things you got from the home builders, and that other meeting that I was in, that we met with them, all right? If you could share those, give those, get manager, if you could share those with the rest of, with the rest of commissioners, then that may take away somebody's heartburn that they have about.
And we'll also resend the, the changes to, to the board.
To the board, right.
And if, like I said, if you have any additional comments that y'all want us to consider, just let me know.
All right, so let me have a motion to table, just number one.
Second.
All right, probably the motion is second, that we table amendment number one to chapter 24, article one. Are you ready for the question? Please cast your votes. Commissioner Wiley, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right. All right, so that's tabled. All right, let's go to number two.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna ask Ms. Davis to come to the podium, she's gonna review change, proposed changes to the revenue ordinance.
All right, now, before I get there, is there anyone who wants to, in the public who wants to comment, who's, if you want to comment, you gotta come sign up, all right? Let me give them the opportunity to come and sign up. All right? Now, request board approval of the 2025 revenue ordinance, all right? Ms. Davis is, okay?
Good morning, Chairman.
I think what you sent us go along with this?
I did, I printed this out, it is also attached to the agenda for the public if they would like to go along. I do not have it to put up on the screen, I'm sorry.
Right, no problem.
Apologize for that, but I can read these, read through these if you'd like me to. Section, article B, section three, the tax rate, we increased the SSD millage from 4.502 mills to 6.502 mills, an increase of two mills. In the CAT district, we reduced the millage rate from 1.056 to .94, a reduction of .116 mills. The Superior Court Clerk's Office, this is article J, I'm sorry, section eight, the Superior Court Clerk's Office passport photo fee changed from $14 to $16. In article Q, Police Administration Fees, we have changed the wording on the fingerprinting fees, I'm sorry, police records fees. The charge printed for copies of records shall be 10 cents per page for cop, per copy. This includes reports such as incidents, accidents, and black and white photographs. There is no fee for emailed documents. Fees are determined by the cost of the service unless otherwise governed by the Open Records Act. Section two, fingerprinting fees, changed the wording to CCPD records, unit will fingerprint using live scan technology any person desiring a permit for a new business that sells alcoholic beverages and is located in Chatham County. The cost for new ABC permit fingerprinting is $5. CCPD will fingerprint for annual renewal of ABC permits. The cost for annual renewal fingerprinting is $5. Section three, search and retrieval services, replaced that section with this. The associated fees for CCPD forensic and records units are changed in accordance with established Georgia OCGA 50-18-71. The first 15 minutes are free of charge. After the initial 15 minutes, the hourly rate of the lowest paid full-time administrative employee, who at the discretion of the custodian of records, has the necessary skill and training to perform the request, will be charged. Section five, it was replaced with, this is video/audio copying fees. Video obtained through the use of body worm cameras, or worn cameras, or vehicle dash cameras will be charged at a cost beginning with $10 in accordance with OCGA 50-18-96G. Additional fees are based on the length of, of the video in its entirety. Section six, expungements and restrictions, it's replaced with GCIC and expungements or restrictions are processed at a fee of $50 per packet. Expungements or restrictions must be handled by the agency where the original charges were filed. The standard processing time is approximately 90 days from the date of submission. The records, section seven, records unit fee was deleted. Articles R, engineering fees, let's see, they have taken out the total land disturbing activity, the LDA fee cannot exceed $50. They've removed the restriction on the.
All right, can we explain why that was done? What was the rationale for excluding that cap?
I would have to refer to the engineering department.
Okay. DC Lee?
Okay. Okay, and as, in the next section, section C, land disturbing activities cannot exceed $50,000, that was also removed, so that restriction was taken out. Arborist residential plots, the charge was changed from $50 to $100 per lot. Arborist lot tree, reinspection, the fee was changed from $50 to $100.
What was the rationale for excluding that cap?
I would have to refer to the engineering department.
Does he leave?
Okay. Okay. And as, in the next section, section C, land disturbing activities cannot exceed $50,000. That was also removed. So that restriction was taken out. Arborist residential plots, the charge was changed from $50 to $100 per lot. Arborist lot tree reinspection, the fee was changed from $50 to $100. J, re inspections, the fee was changed from $200 to $400.
So I've got a question. Those are 100% increases. They seem like more than just your normal inflation bumps that would typically be seen. So can we get explanation why we're.
Again, that would be engineering.
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll have county engineer to come back down and go through those. Ms. Davis is going to just go back through those and we'll pull out what we need to have additional information on.
So the majority of the other, am I reading correctly? The majority of the other things come from engineering?
Uh, let's see. There's.
Other engineering fees?
Well, other engineering fees, the flood plan development review and inspection fee. I believe this is a replacement of the encroachment plan fee. A large project, $450 per project includes projects over 250 square feet, including but not limited to new residents, substantial improvement, large addition, and large detached structure. B, small project of $150 per project includes projects of 250 square feet or less, including but not limited to small addition porch, pool, deck, and small detached structures. The flood plan, encroachment plan was replaced with the following. Flood plan encroachment flood study review fee, $100, $150 per flood study. Flood study shall have prior approval by the flood plain administrator before submission. The flood plain encroachment flood study was replaced with the following. Do you want me to go ahead and finish reading through these or do you want?
Well, I, I think what, what, what I'm understanding now is that it honestly has to come from engineering.
We request the changes that come from all of the departments. So each department submits their own requested changes, their fees.
Okay. So now, do we have somebody here from solid waste? Cause aren't, isn't the solid waste the one asking for the change?
Well, that's, that's a need.
These right here are engineering fees.
Engineering fees that you just read.
Yeah.
That's why I say.
Solid waste is coming up.
Right. Right. But I'm just saying, what I'm, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to get to the point of is saying, uh, that, um, if solid waste is saying this is what it's going to cost us to do this, you can't explain that. Solid waste would have to, the folks who manage solid waste would have to do that, right?
The particular change in solid waste, I think I could explain.
You could explain that? Okay. Well, go ahead and then let's go to solid waste. Then we come back to engineering.
Okay. I'll skip on over to.
That's where I'm getting at.
Article V, solid waste operations, we're changing the fee from $85 to $125. The reason for that is the system is not self-supporting. We have made transfers for the last four years.
Right.
Ranging from $676,000 in 2023 to 2.7 million in 2024. These are fees needed to replace equipment. These fees are coming, or these charges are coming from the SSD. And this year, in, in order to streamline the SSD budget, we stripped all of those transfers. The SSD can no longer make those transfers, or that's what we were told. Therefore, in order for this fund to be self-supporting, we need to increase that fee.
Right.
We have $4 million in equipment that is fully depreciated. We have three vehicles on the agenda today that y'all just approved, just shy of $1 million. We're going to have to replace about three, three trucks a year. That's going to be a million dollars a year. It's just not self-supporting.
Right. It can't stay at the $85 and support it.
And that's just the trucks. We also have the grinders.
Right.
The grinders run roughly a million dollars each and they wear out in about five years. We were, we replaced one, I believe in 2024, but we'll probably have to replace another one coming up in another three years. It's just a very expensive operation with very, very expensive equipment. That's about it in a nutshell.
So we going to provide the service, we got to pay for it. That's, that's the short, none.
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Farrell?
So let me give you all a little history. The SSD all, in the past, had always provided the dry trash service through its millage. There was reluctance to raise the millage rate, so the previous county manager, uh, came up with this fee for the dry trash to, to raise some extra funding to, to cover it. So that's how that just developed, you know, out of thin air by a request from the county manager's office and approval by the majority of the members sitting here years ago. You know, with, with my historical perspective, it's very difficult for me to raise the, the fee when we just increased the millage by two mills, which was 40 something percent increase in the, in the tax in the SSD. So I won't be supporting this fee increase due to the millage increase we've already put out there. And this was just something that was created to raise revenue and just, I just. So I'm just making that statement.
But now specifically, the two mills that we raised, the SSD was for a fire service, which we never had before. So if you look at it, if we take the fire and the two mills out, we didn't raise the, the millage rate. So therefore, the millage rate cannot stay that same because the two mills you have in there is to pay for fire service and fire equipment and, and, and that's all. That's what it's for. All right? So when you come to the dry trash fee, the millage rate we didn't raise. But you cannot continue to go to other places and come up with $2 million or $4 million because you need this equipment or that equipment. It's a service we rendering for dry trash, right?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
We got to pay for the service. This is the way you pay for it. So now, if, if, if you want to hop on the two mills, the two mills are strictly for fire protection.
As you recall.
It has nothing to do with this dry trash.
As you recall, there was an alternative to the two mills that was not accepted by the majority of the board.
Which was illegal. Now, let's, let's put the, put the horse on the, put, put you on top of the horse so you can ride. It was illegal.
In your opinion?
Nope, not my opinion. ACCG told us that and, or what's that municipal told us that we'd have to go to, uh, service delivery.
Then we should have gone to service delivery.
Service delivery don't come up until next year.
It can be done at any time.
It can't, it is not coming up until next year.
It can be done at any time.
You either going to pay for this dry trash fee or you not going to pay for it. You either going to provide trash service for the unincorporated area or you not going, but you cannot stay where we are and you cannot, because your idea wasn't accepted. You can't block us in and say, we didn't want to go along. They were telling us we couldn't do it the way you all were saying. The left-hand math didn't work.
That's your interpretation.
That's a lot of people's interpretation. Now, you can blame it on me and it's because I sit in the chair and see, just throw it all this way because I'll take it. All right? But the bottom line is if we going to provide the service, we cannot provide the service at the fee we were charging. And so we passed a budget. I want everybody to understand this. We passed a budget and in that budget, it was based upon the 125, not the 85. So we cannot isolate this because the idea that you had, that folks said wouldn't work and we took the experts' advice that it wouldn't work. We took the, the finance folks' word that it wouldn't work and we didn't pass it the way you wanted it to be passed. Short, long, and to the point.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Inflation is very much.
And everything's costing. Everything's costing. All right? So what I, what I, what I'm getting at too is don't let us sit up here and think that when we put the two mills in the unincorporated areas, that it was for all services. It was not. It's only for the fire service. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Correct. All right? So now, just stop trying to blanket this. All right? You had an opportunity to help the folks in the unincorporated areas because I told you, let's cut CAT millage by half. Y'all didn't want to go that way. You didn't want to go that way. You played politics with it. And so we adjusted. We adjusted. You cannot continue to provide the service and the level of service that the unincorporated people are expecting at the cost and the price you wanted to stay at $85. It just cannot happen, folks. So you can argue any kind of way, but it's just not working out. It's costing more, the equipment costs more. There once was a time when you could buy some of this equipment for $500,000. Now every time you go in there, it starts at a million and go running up. The ladder don't go down, the ladder going up, the escalator going up, it ain't coming down. And we must face that. Yes, sir?
So the budget that we approved reflected a 125 rate and not a $85 rate?
Yes.
Yes.
So we implemented something that wasn't.
The budget also includes a 1.3 million dollar transfer.
I, I understand that. I'm just, we approved a budget and the revenue schedule did not reflect that. It just seems like the cart's behind the horse, in my opinion.
But it did reflect that. Cause it told you that the cost would be 125.
The budget did.
The budget said 125. The revenue, revenue ordinance is now catching up with the budget.
That was pointed out in the budget.
That was pointed out. It was made known.
Yes, sir.
You got to start studying this stuff. Got to start reading. Got to burn the midnight off so you understand what you're voting on. And it passed. Yes, sir? Commissioner Whitey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I do want to touch base on something that I see here that is quite concerning. Just for the record, I do recall us, it being brought to our attention that this was going to be the change of the dry trash fee was discussed with us in detail when it came to budget discussions. And I know our meeting minutes reflect that as well. My concern is reference to appendix B. Section three. Other sports and park space fees. Now, two years ago, this commission voted to make daytime field usage for community recognized organizations free up to two hours. And I see in this ordinance, this draft ordinance, that is not reflected. And so I'm, I want to ask Mr. Manager, was there some sort of cost analysis that showed that we were losing a whole lot of money by letting community organizations use our fields during the daytime, which led to us removing this? Otherwise, I would like to see that clause put back in.
Uh, no, sir. It was essentially a scheduling issue that we're working with, but it's still our practice.
Okay. So I understand that it's the practice and I just ask and I want to just share with my colleagues, y'all heard the manager say this. So whenever a motion is made, I, I do hope that we include the amendment that states that daytime field usage for recognized community organization for up to two hours is no charge. Again, the whole basis behind it was organizations that are engaged in our youth, that are engaged in our community, as long as 80% of their membership are Chatham County residents, then they should not have to pay to use a field up to two hours, of course, within reason during the day. Now, of course, at nighttime, of course, we understand that there's staff that might be necessary to cut on lights and so on and so forth. So that's different. But during the daytime, that was in the ordinance. If you were to Google the ordinance right now, it's reflected and I would like that to stay in the ordinance because I think it's important that we do not penalize or penalize community organizations that are engaged in our youth as it ties into our blueprint.
We didn't take it out, do we?
Uh, well, we shouldn't.
It wasn't taken out, Mr. Chairman.
If, if it's out there, if it was taken out, it's, it's an oversight, but we'll make sure it's in there.
Yeah. Because that was, it, it, nothing I have or nothing that was given to me, all right, before I allowed this to come forward, that said that was taken out. So if, if it's.
I understand.
If, if it was, it just needs to be put back. That's all. And you're talking about, you're talking about an edit that they need to do. And so we can do the edit real quickly without any, any other hazards going to this.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's, that's all my, I need to make sure it was stated for the record so the intent was clear.
All right. Now, Ms. Davis, anything else you need to bring before we bring the engineers up?
I can read this for the next 20 minutes if you'd like me to.
No, ma'am. No, ma'am.
Okay. Let me get, um.
That's what I'm talking about. No, ma'am. So the engineer will come and explain those, those parts that, that we're asking you to explain for?
Yes. Which ones? Did you have questions about all of them?
No.
Well, let's go back to.
Commissioner Farrell has some specific ones he want to ask you about.
Well, let me get back to it. We jumping all around. All right. So the first question I have is the cap at 50,000 for land disturbing activity fees? What's, why are we removing that?
Because the larger sites are taking up so much of staff time because, keep in mind, these aren't just plan review fees. These are inspection, this covers inspection through all of construction. It covers closeout and enforcement. So the time that it takes on the larger projects can span several years and without that, without that cap, what we're seeing is we're not getting, we're not generating enough money to sustain the program.
So it's still the same fee per acre?
Correct.
You're just taking the cap off?
Correct.
So at what point does this thing really kick in per, on acreage?
So anything over, residential is anything over one acre. For commercial, it's anything over 2,500 square.
No, I mean the 50,000.
Oh, the 50,000.
When do you exceed? At what acreage level? Let me rephrase the question.
Math.
At what acreage level do you exceed the $50,000?
We stayed there, Austin. My name is full, there, Austin. The way that I. 50,000 acres? That doesn't cover.
Would be like something over 32 acres?
Yes. So, so it's a pretty substantial development. And again, it's because this covers us through closeout. So we're seeing these things stretch on for years and years and 50,000 doesn't cover the cost of the business.
So what level of acreages have we been dealing with for the last two or three years, let's say, in developments that would come under this land disturbing activity that would break the cap of 50,000?
Not many, honestly, not many. I can get you exact numbers, but I don't have them runoffed, but we aren't.
We doing 50 acre subdivisions, 10 acre subdivisions, 100 acre?
Not many, no. Most of those are getting annexed into the municipalities. We've only seen in the past year, maybe I'd say two or three that are actually exceeding that.
And by how much? I mean, just roughly. What's the acreage? I'm just trying to get some.
So the average, so what we're seeing now are more of these smaller infill that are averaging, you know, probably five acres or even less.
So that wouldn't even be affected by this?
Yes. We're not seeing really big developments.
Okay. All right. Next question is we got 100% increase on the Arborist Residential Plot Plan Review?
Yes. That fee was, that $50 was established when the ordinance was developed in, I'm going to say the 90s and hasn't gone up since. So all we're proposing is that it go up to cover the cost of the Arborist review.
So we're for all, so all the tree inspections, I mean, and the re inspections, why is there a reinspection?
Well, that is to keep us from getting called out when they're not ready, honestly. Well, that is to keep us from getting called out when they're not ready, honestly. It's, otherwise, we'd be called out to every site every day to look at something that they know that, and by they, I mean, generally contractors know aren't ready to go, but they want to have us come do their inspections for them, and we just don't have the staff to do that.
So if they call you once, it costs them a hundred bucks and they're done?
Correct.
They call you multiple times and they're not ready, and you're just having to keep coming back because they're, I got.
Right, that just keeps the ones that know they're not ready from calling us out multiple times.
All right. Now, let's go to the floodplain development review. That's a three-hundred percent increase from one-fifty to four-fifty, that's a pretty big jump. Can you explain?
That is correct. So when this, one-fifty was originally established, engineering was not reviewing the structure. We were only looking at the fill on the site, and now we're reviewing the entire structure plans and guaranteeing compliance with the FDPO. And again, that require us now to come out dirt before the foundations poured and all through construction, and then closeout, and getting all the documents together to verify that it's been constructed accurately.
So you're doing more than what you originally started at a hundred and fifty?
Correct, we're doing quite a bit more.
And why are we doing more?
Because the board asked that we change our policies and the way that those permits are issued and enforced, so that we don't get structures built that don't comply, and then we find out after the fact.
So that goes back to the improvements in the flood insurance rates, is that somewhat tied to that?
Yes, we were finding that structures were getting, were getting completed, and then we, but the way the policy used to work is we would only review the fill on the site to guarantee that they were meeting that. And then building safety would review the structures for compliance with all ordinances related to buildings. Some structures were getting completed, but the way the process was and the way the FEMA ordinance require us to get a copy of the elevation certificate at the end, we're getting at the end, when they're sitting at their closing table and finding out that the structures didn't comply with the ordinance, therefore, we can't approve that, or else we get kicked out of the CRS program. And we, but we don't need people sitting at the closing table to find out that their structure doesn't comply. We would like to catch that before it gets built.
That's where the situation, I think it was on Betts Creek, where they finalized the structure that came before this board, and.
And we had to pay for it.
Right.
Yes.
So I'm hearing.
Because they want to, they weren't allowed to do what they're asking to do now, because now they have to go through the process, throughout the whole process.
Correct.
And we won't, we won't get people putting up stuff that doesn't meet regulation.
And that was when the board asked us to change policy.
All right, let me go, all right, Commissioner Milton?
So you have staff to do that?
I mean, they're forcing us to do what we haven't been doing before. Are you staff to do all of that?
We're getting it done.
They're getting it done, that means.
We're getting it done. Would staff prefer we had more staff to help, yes, but we're getting it done with what we have.
Very good.
Okay. Now, did we get all your questions? Did we get all everybody's question? All right, did we get it? Did we get it? All right. The request is to approve the twenty-five readiness order. May I have a motion to approve it?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Just second.
A second motion?
All right, properly motion is second, and it does include Commissioner Whiteley for your, it does include, we going to put that language back in there, but that's just an editorial problem, that's not, all right? Any unreadiness? All right, all those favors are cast, I mean, all those, catch your votes, please? Catch your votes, Commissioner, how you vote? There you go. Yes. All right, we through, we got that, all right? Now, let's go to the last one. amend to section one-ten enforcement of the Chatham County Environmental Health Regulations and Ordinance found under chapter twenty-one, the health, safety, and sanitation of the Chatham County Code. And I've asked Mr. Manager that Ms. Baker comes and say publicly what she said to us in the green room.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. Identify yourself for the public.
My name is Lauren Baker Newton, and I'm the Environmental Health Manager with Chatham County Health Department.
Okay.
So with this, what we are requesting is to amend existing ordinance twenty-one dash one-ten that was originally adopted in two thousand and nine. The amendment, the changes that we are seeking would reflect the changes that were made via legislator, legislation, excuse me, to, that dissolved the Department of Human Resources and effectively created the Department of Public Health. So it is changing the name of the department as well as the code provisions that are stated within the existing ordinance. Additionally, adding to language to identify two resolutions that were adopted by the local Board of Health that speak to commercial growth and the use of septic systems, specifically as it relates to properties that lie within those flood, the areas that were identified within the floodplain ordinance. What we were finding was that the language that the Health Department was using when issuing permits would sometimes conflict with the Engineering Department, specifically dealing with fill being brought in for use with septic systems. Additionally, there was another resolution that was adopted by the Board of Health that spoke to, again, commercial growth and use of commercial systems, specifically for facilities that produce a high-strength waste, because there are certain system types that can't be used because they're not going to break down that waste prior to it being essentially put back into the ground. I will also add that this amendment, or this ordinance is often not used as our first option. We are educators first, we do try our best to work with our citizens and our business owners. We educate first, we do our best to also seek for voluntary compliance with all of our rules and regulations. What this does, this ordinance essentially adds a new tool to our tool belt, or adds an additional tool to our tool belt in the event that our traditional enforcement actions do not work, where we can utilize our local courts for that enforcement action.
Okay, all right. We got everything? All right, let me have a motion.
Question.
You have a question?
So is there any, will the public notice any difference in their day-to-day activities with septic tanks and that sort of thing? Or is this just more of a housekeeping?
No, sir, they won't see any differences in the permitting process, the regulations themselves, and things of that nature.
So there won't be new regulations or dropped regulations, it'll be just a different, different order?
More of a housekeeping, but also, as I said, to align us with other county ordinances so that you don't have, you know, one department saying one thing and another department saying, and that, and there's confusion for the public.
Right.
So it aligns us.
When they conflict.
Yes.
So this integrates everything to be.
In hopes so that it's a seamless process.
Got it, okay, thank you.
All right, got it? So let me have a motion to amend.
Motion to amend.
All right. Properly motion is second, that we grant the motion to amend, are you ready for the question? How you vote, Commissioner?
Yes.
Votes of what, yes? All right, all votes in. Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. All right, now we go to you, Mr. Manager, for information?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, just briefly, I want to remind the board that you have in your packet the legislative summary and future activities that we hope to bring before you. Want to remind the board that this is the time where I request that you look and provide me with any legislative issue that we want to bring before our delegation, before they head back to Atlanta. We will be scheduling a couple meetings with them, and just as we've done in previous years, I want to encourage you to attend the Business Roundtable Workshop, August twenty-seventh, at Fort Tech. And then, I want to remind you about the Rio Vista Neighborhood Park Ruben Covenant Ceremony that will be held this Saturday at ten AM. And that concludes my updates, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Yes, sir.
In relation to the grand opening of the Rio Vista Park, I just want to publicly thank county staff, the county managers, especially Parks and Rec. They have been on top of this since day one. It's been a long time coming, but I can tell you that we're very appreciative in the neighborhood. It doesn't just serve Burnset Island, people come from off the island, so we appreciate it, thank you.
All right, Commissioner?
A couple things. Haven't talked about the large indoor recreation center lately, but as you mentioned about legislative session, in order to fund a large project of this nature, has any consideration been given to go to the state legislature and seek financial assistance to add to what we've already got in order to have a first-class game changer for Chatham County in southeast Georgia?
We can certainly add that to the list, sir, we can do that.
All right, he's going to add it to the list. We haven't done it before, but we're going to add it to the list, all right, as we talk. All right, anything else? All right, with that, now, there is a need for us to recess to executive session for litigation, acquisitions, and appointments, all right?
Motion to recess into executive session.
Properly motion is second, that we recess to the executive session, are you ready for the question? Please, catch your votes, Commissioner Whiteley, how do you vote? Commissioner Whiteley votes yes? All right, all votes in, we're in recess.
A portion of the American Rescue Plan Act funding is allocated to address Chatham County drainage and stormwater issues. There are.